And also to review and approve the executive session minutes of March 11th and April 8th. Motion was made by Mr. Mickelson.
Yes, second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Neil. We have four members in the dais and we have one member remote. Votes will be done by roll call vote. So on the motion, any questions? Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Brooks.
Yeah.
Here votes in favor. We will return as close to 6:30 as possible.
Call a meeting of September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four called to order. The meeting is being recorded and available on the DCTV YouTube website. We will have four members in present and one member on remote. All votes will be done roll call vote. Please rise as we salute the flag. Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both here and abroad, and both past and present. Okay, please be seated. Thank you, everyone. Warrant has been passed and has been signed, and we have no appointments tonight, so might as well get right down to business. First item on the agenda, we have VR Zone Entertainment License at two hundred mall, Dartmouth Mall, unit number thirteen fifty-four. Anybody here for the VR? Step up.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say this is my first time obviously speaking here, and I haven't had to speak in front of an audience since high school, so.
We don't, we don't bite, so.
Well, basically what we do at our, the arcade is we pay a flat admission, we give you a wristband con like a water park, and it's as long as you're willing to stay as long as you can play. The majority of our arcade is set free to play, so you can just have as much fun as you want. We have some crane games and some things like a, a pool table and an eye boxer that costs money separately, but everything in there that costs extra is just a dollar, and we have a carousel as well, that's a buck fifty, but it's a little over two minutes, so that's for the small kids.
So business is good?
Yeah, yeah, we're really just trying to bring more business to Dartmouth. The Dartmouth Mall obviously has been kind of struggling, so it's one of the really kind of bright spots that we have right now in Dartmouth for that arcade. I see a lot of kids that are very happy to be able to play for hours.
Right. All right, board members have any questions? Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neil, on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote. Ms. Brooks. Ms. Brooks? Are you muted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Mr. O'Neil?
Beautiful.
Yes. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Community Preservation Committee at Large Appointment, Susan Murray. Absolutely.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Introduce yourself and just, why?
So my name is Susan Murray, I live on Elm Street in Dartmouth. I grew up here in Dartmouth, moved away for a while, came back and founded a farm, so I'm Flying Carrot Farm on Elm Street in Dartmouth. Very passionate about open space, working lands in this town, and I feel very strongly that being a part of the Community Preservation Committee would, you know, I'd love to be a part of it so that I can help preserve these lands and, and work to this town that I love.
Great. Board members have any questions?
Which farm did it say you operate?
Flying Carrot Farm.
Oh.
Flying Carrot, yeah.
Right in my backyard.
That's right. Be careful.
All right, board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
A second.
Mr. Tattlebaum on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, you're appointed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming to us. Appreciate it.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a, an appointment to the Tree Committee. Adam Corizwa.
Kareva.
All right, that's close.
Kareva.
Round of applause.
All right, Adam.
You want a standing ovation?
Those tree people, they're, you know.
Very passionate.
They'll leave you alone, I guess, I don't know.
Always want to get to the top.
All right, so Adam, just kind of give us a brief, you know, why?
Okay, so my background is in coupled human and natural systems and ecology with mathematics, and I have some tech background too, but I just didn't quite finish my thesis, so I can't work in government for those training, but I do want to apply the skills to the things that I'm very passionate about, which would be things like climate change and biodiversity, sustaining those things, and I want to get connected with the community that I'm living in the best that I can while applying those skills. So I happened to go to a meeting of the Dartmouth Tree Committee, they were looking for someone who could do perhaps some GIS work, and that's what, the way that I'm getting connected first.
This is, this is probably a very good fit to get your feet wet.
I think so.
For sure.
Yeah.
Board members have any questions?
I'd just comment on the Tree Committee itself, I mean, it's relatively new and the, the engagement and the, and the growth has been like exponential, a lot of passion there, and it's a great thing to have with the town.
Good to see.
Make sure you do it, you're told to do because they have high standards.
She's tough.
High standards.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Tattlebaum on the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have right now a series of articles that are going to be presented in, presented at town meeting, and we have the sponsors of these articles here, so if you need to refer to those articles, refer to them in your warrant that's on the board. We don't have the each presentation, so for the planning board, go to the planning board articles in the spring warrant, and then we'll go from there. So the first is the planning board article presentation, Ms. O'Grady.
Hello, everyone. For the record, I am Christine O'Grady, the Planning Director. I am here before you tonight on behalf of the planning board to present an overview of the planning board sponsored warrant article for town meeting. The article is proposed is to create a new section three seventy-five, Article fifty of the zoning bylaw entitled Accessory Dwelling Units, also referred to as ADUs. The purpose of Article fifty is to provide housing options for families that reduce maintenance cost and are more affordable, develop a range of housing types, reduce the demands on multiple municipal services, and use materials more effectively. It will also promote development that is in harmony with the town's natural features, establish flexible residential development standards and procedures, and it will also facilitate housing production diversity and affordability. As proposed, this ADU will be allowed as a right in the single residence A, B, C, and general residence districts. They, the units will be attached to or, and subordinate to a principal, single-family residential structure and on the same lot. They will have dimensional requirements with one thousand feet of habitable, habitable gross floor area and a two-bedroom max. And then certain allowances will be granted for detached ADUs, that is further defined in the bylaw that you have in front of you. The ADU as proposed will have dimensional parking and occupancy requirements as stated in the bylaw, and they will also be required to meet all of the dimensional requirements for the underlying zoning district in which they reside. Lastly, there will be no special permit requirement for any plumbing other than anything that comes with regard to any certain department, like the building department or something like that, DPW. The creation of the bylaw will result in some minor deletions, amendments, and modifications to existing bylaws, and that is further explained in your warrant article. The first of these deletions- The first of these deletions is to take out anything with regard to accessory apartments. We will no longer be using that term. The next set of deletions is with regard to off-street parking for the accessory apartments. Another change will be to the use table that was brought about at the last town meeting. We will change it from accessory apartments to accessory dwelling units, and it will be permitted in those sections under SRA, SRB, SRC, and GR. The next will be a replacement of obviously the accessory apartment definition with the accessory dwelling unit, and another change will be a set of changes to amend the definition for accessory building with utilities. The other piece of this will be, we will amend the definition for detached accessory structure. The planning board's intent in creating the bylaw in part is for a need for more senior housing in the town of Dartmouth. The intent, they're doing this by providing families with more options for caring for loved ones at home, assisting in developing, turning over housing stock with respect to still allowing seniors to be, you know, to feel comfortable residing in the town here. The creation of this bylaw without the age restriction component will also allow families to assist young adults that are just starting out, that have grown up and live in Dartmouth and want to stay in Dartmouth, so this might be another option for them. So, basically, we're kind of envisioning it as multi-generational uses. The size allowance is, was considered very carefully, and that came about as people look at medical equipment and, you know, things that people need for, you know, actually caregiving in some cases, and that's where also the two-bedroom thing might come into play because a caregiver could also be brought into the unit. I know that people often ask about the master plan, so this is something that the planning board felt very strongly would meet some of the goals of the master plan. So, in particular, it meets five of the goals, as I see it. They have to do with land use, housing, and then services and facilities. I would say, planning, the planning board worked with town council throughout this. It does meet any state and local requirements. There are no boundary changes to any zoning district in the town. Again, this district applies to single residence A, single residence B, C, and the general residence. It does also... I know that there was a question the other day with regard to short-term rentals. There is a mention of short-term rentals in the bylaw. It does clearly contrast the explanation of short-term rentals with leases used to establish residency. I'd say that those were the biggest things. I don't know if any of you have any questions in particular for me?
Board members, questions, Mr. Mickelson?
Thank you, by the way.
You're welcome.
This is great for the town, it's sorely needed. But I noticed there are no ADA requirements. Was that purposely taken out?
That was purposely not included, yes.
Not added to the restrictions?
Because we want to keep the opening, you know, to allow it to be done for a number of different things, but it was not something that town council advised us to do, and there was...
That's great.
You know, we did take that into consideration with the sizing in particular, so these units can be up to 1,000 square feet.
Yeah. Well, that helps on the ADA side.
Yes, yes.
That's great. That's really important that that's not a restriction because it's very costly, as we all know, and it takes up an awful lot more room, too. Thank you.
Any other... Mr. Tattelbaum?
I'm pretty very impressed with the amount of detail in the drill down, even to the point where the inhabitants must be related?
Well, so they don't necessarily have to be related to the main people in the household, but they have to be related to each other. Part of the reason for that was to help with the short-term rental things or for, you know, some of the, you know, some off-campus housing things that might occur. So, we tried to take all of those things into consideration when that was being... But yet to live it, to limit it because families are a little bit different now. You know, it's not quite as clear-cut as it used to be.
The second part of my question, also, has this been done in other towns successfully, similar to what we're doing?
Yes, so one of the ones that we, the planning board primarily focused on was Rantham.
Rantham?
Yes. They seem to be very forward-thinking in a lot of their...
Wonderful.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, do you have anything?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. I know that we've changed planning board, but in looking at this, and there's some, you know, certainly impact where it's placed on someone's land and how large a unit it could be on someone's particular piece of property. Is the Director of Building Department in favor of this?
The new Director of the Building Department? Am I supposed to be looking this way or...
You can look at that. We're still looking at this, that's fine.
You can have to speak into the mic, though.
So, the Director of the, Director of Inspection Services, or the Building Commissioner now, he did express some concerns about it with regard to the state definitions, but we have been assured by town council, and we have worked with them extensively that this is, this is not, we are not going against anything that is proposed. In fact, we're, you know, doing something a little bit bigger, you know, and you have to all keep in mind that your zoning is such in this town that you have bigger, you have bigger parcels, primarily 90% or at least 80% of your parcels are larger scale, so you have the options there. And again, they wanted to have it bigger so that you can take into account medical equipment and hospital beds or whatever needs to happen. But no, he had expressed some concerns.
That's great, okay. Anything else, Ms. Brooks?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Look at your microphone because you're actually looking at me when you're looking at the microphone. On my screen, that's how I see you best.
Mr. O'Neil?
So, Heidi, I think one of the, one of the ideas that you were going for was setbacks, you know, on the lots themselves, are there any exclusions or limitations when it comes to the setbacks, and there aren't? The proponents would have to adhere to current setbacks in all the zone areas. Couple of things that aren't on this, you know, you can't really present to, as an article, some of the things that come into play with this. We have something on the books right now, it's only about, I believe it's about 580 square feet. So, simply what we're trying to do is increase the size of these particular units by going to 1,000. Some of the things that you can't see on the warrant is some of the ancillary things, like the increase in value for a home that, a homeowner that decides to actually attach an ADU to their particular property. So, we'd assume that we're going to spend some money in town, we're going to spend some money with the contractors, plumbers, electricians, framers, all of those individuals that can hopefully stay local to get some of these done. We're going to try and drive some of the permits. We do, we do have some of these permitted annually, but I think the added square footage will lend to a few more applications. They'll have to adhere to all other town requirements, septic systems, setbacks, et cetera. But the valuations of the houses would, would obviously increase. Contractors would be taken care of, assessed values would go up, trades would be taken care of. And one of the things that, in the, in the master plan, it's kind of difficult to actually implement some of the things in a master plan, so we really looked at some options on, in planning on how we could actually implement some of the things that we, we had under our chapters. So, this was definitely one of them, so, thanks, Christine.
With the ADU being added to, so let's, let's say from a separate, stay away from the separate building part of it. Say if somebody has a detached garage, they want to turn it, and say you want to put an ADU on your current home, is it, is it the gist of this to have it metered for utilities the same as the house, or can it be separately metered?
It has to be separate. We did reach out to the, to the DPW as well, so there are some requirements with that. So, we did check into that as well, but that will be metered separately.
Okay, as far as electric and, I mean, if they have gas, if it's... I'm mostly talking about electric and gas, I'm not... Sewer-wise, it's generally the same, using the same pipe to go to the same, if it's sewer-connected.
Well, okay, so I stand corrected then. I guess DPW looked at it more with regard to water and sewer.
Water and sewer, okay.
Water and sewer.
What about utilities, gas and electric?
Utilities, you can do that either way, anyway, I mean, just per... I mean, whether or not there's going to be a separate line coming in, I guess that would be up to the homeowner to decide.
The current, the current language regarding accessory units, I think that's, they have to be equally, they have to be same as the home as far as utilities go, if I'm not mistaken. It can't be metered separately.
That, I don't know that, to be honest with you, because it's a little bit different in every single one of the residential districts that we look at, so I can't say for sure if they're all the same or not. Some of that, that information will be determined ultimately by the building official.
Right, but the gist of this whole change is that it's increasing, it's increasing the size of the ADU.
That's, that's one of the primary concerns. And then it's also, quite frankly, I mean, a lot of the accessory departments, apartments, the way you have them now, I mean, or accessory structures and things like that, people are converting them after. We see time and time again, you know, somebody comes in for a pool house or something, and then next thing you know, there's a bathroom in there, and there's, you know, there's a shower, and there's, you know, and then it becomes a living unit. So, part of it is so we can avoid some of that because I, to be honest with you, I've never worked in a community with so many, so many pool houses. I'm not going to lie.
In barns, in barns with...
Yeah.
Okay. Utilities on the second floor.
One follow-up, Mr. Jim?
Tattelbaum?
As far as the Rantham, do we have any data as to whether this, this change in that town is simulated? What kind of activity actually simulated to add these units?
I did not look at that, no.
Do you have any idea how long they've been doing it?
They've been doing it a while, I don't know exactly what year, I've forgotten off the top of my head, but they have been doing it for a while. I don't know if it's, if it's 10 or 20 years, but it's not like a brand-new bylaw.
Well, our, our community, David, has been, has had accessory units well over 10 years.
I don't understand, but this is, this is designed to make...
It's just an increase, yeah, it's increasing the size.
Double the size. I have a question. So, a potential property owner has taken a paperwork out to add to his home or their home, and it's a few months or six months down the line, it hasn't been permitted yet. This gives him an opportunity to rethink that footprint, would you say?
Right, I would definitely say that.
Encourage people to, to give them another opportunity at this point now, before they get permitted.
Right.
Right.
And I think, you know, by leaving it without, you know, while we're, again, trying to meet the needs of the senior population here, I think by leaving out some of the age restrictions, which is where the planning board had started looking at an over-55 bylaw or a 62-plus, I mean, we open it up a little bit more because, again, you know, there's a whole range of people that need something, and, you know,
well, that's...
We're giving those, those opportunities, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Ms. Brooks?
Sorry. I'm looking at H, in Section H, where it talks about the owner may not lease, rent a short-term lease rental. Anyway, the owner, it's the owner's primary residence. Either one, either the ADU or the house is the owner's primary residence. Who's going to be monitoring that?
Well, you have, you have a zoning enforcement officer, right? I mean, I don't know how much enforcement we're going to be doing. It's not the planning board that's going to be doing that. You have to put something like that in place, I would say. I think it's important to put that in there. You know, in some of these cases, maybe it's, it's a family member coming back, and they're going to take over, the younger family member's going to take over the main house, and they're going to put the accessory dwelling unit on for the senior who is living in the house and doesn't want to leave their property. I mean, but as far as enforcement, that's going to be dependent on the, on how the town moves forward with things.
I mean, as far as, as far as enforcement of as to who owns, you know, who owns the house, unfortunately, in today's day and age, I think the neighborhood will probably take care of that. So, anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, we get to see one of our favorite board members.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Buddy Baker Smith.
Oh, boy. Get ready.
All right, Buddy's here to, to present the Capital Planning Committee articles. Buddy?
Yeah, the Committee Preservation.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. It's been a long day.
That, I can certainly understand that. So, there are several CPA articles on the warrant. Would it be helpful if I just kind of went through them in the order I have here, or if you have a particular order?
Right ahead.
Okay. So, I'll start with the project warrant articles. And the first one I have on my list here is the Cornell Pond Trail Development, which is a recreation kind of use. Cornell Pond, folks are familiar, is a town of Dartmouth recreation land. This project is to develop the design and permitting, preparing for the permitting of ADA-accessible trail at the Cornell Pond. Pond, it's probably about 600 or so more feet. It will go across the spillway there at the dam at Cornell, so it will require some bridge construction. It will also connect the parking lot area and extend to the Howland Reserve, which is a DNRT open-space reserve that's adjacent to Cornell Pond. The request for CPA funds is $24,000, and that's part of a total budget of about $194,000, I believe. No, excuse me, $120,000, the other $96,000 would be an alter, a mass trails grant that the town's pursuing. Would it make sense to, just if there are questions for each one at a time?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll go through all the articles. You'll go through all the articles, if there's anything that any member has.
Okay, great, thank you. The second warrant article is the Dartmouth Housing Production Plan. So, each community in Massachusetts required to do a five-year affordable housing production plan. And the town of Dartmouth has one that expires this year. I think it was probably around February or something like that of 2024, this year, that expired. So, the town is now engaged in developing a new production plan. The request is for $25,000 in CPA funds to support the plan. The town is also pursuing technical assistance grant funds, I think through SERPEd. SERPEd offers a multi-tiered kind of plan that they can do for a town. This $25,000 will cover the minimum state requirement, but if there's additional technical assistance grant money that comes through SERPEd, the town will be able to do a more detailed plan that also would involve more community engagement. So, I think that's the, the hope, is that SERPEd will come through with some funding as well. The third project is the Pontagansett Park and Dias Landing Master Plan, and the request there is for $15,000. Some additional funds will be secured by the town. The total cost of the project is estimated at $75,000, so another $60,000 would be through other grants that the town would pursue. I think the, I think it's the Coastal Economic...
Coastal Economic Council.
Thank you, yes, that's it.
And they're putting up the $60,000?
One of the things that we asked in, look, there's a couple of articles that involve the harbor, and we had asked if Assistant Town Administrator Chris Vitale could also present just an overview to the CPC, and he did a very nice job of putting all of this in context. There is a harbor management plan that the town has. in context. There is a harbor management plan that the town has, which is informative, but it's not at a level of detail that a particular parcel like the Ponte Gansett Park and the Dais Landing. There's a lot more detail in terms of what the future of that property could look like, how those uses could blend together, collaborate in the future. And so this master plan is really taking the harbor management plan and the town's open space management plan, and really taking it to a much greater level of detail and specificity in terms of goals and objectives. So the request there is $15,000 and another $60,000 from the council, the state council. The other project is the harbor dredging design and planning, and this is, the request here is $10,000, and there's additional funds of additional $40,000 for a total of $50,000. The additional funds coming from, I believe, a council grant as well. And this is to look at, provide basically the data and the engineering and recommendations on deepening the channel going into the harbor, so that more recreational boats can use the harbor. Right now, there's, and I, I'm not a sailor, I'm not a boater, so I don't have the deep, but there is a, there is a size or class of boat that really is, because of silt over the years, is not really able to come into the harbor. And so this would kind of open up that channel, as well as a piece around the Dais Landing. Again, this is part of the harbor plan, in terms of increasing recreational and economic use of the, of the harbor. And so this is something that can kind of lay the groundwork for dredging that would really, I think, open up the harbor for more use. And then the final project we have is the Dais Landing, Landing Dinghy Storage Improvements. I think folks are probably aware, if you've gone along the road there, you see where dinghies are stored, right along the edge there. Some of those need replacement. I think the Waterways has an idea of a better kind of model for storing dinghies and kayaks. So the request is $9,000 from the CPA funds to replace and, I think, expand with an improved design and the storage of the dinghies and also kayaks there at the landing. And that there is a total of $50,000, and the Waterways or the town would be pursuing additional grant funds for the balance of that. So those are all the project warrant articles that we have.
And the remaining two are the annual housekeeping articles.
That's right. So one for setting aside the, project, 10% of projected revenue for each of the eligible uses. And our strategy as a committee, you can, the requirement is either to set aside 10% for each use of, of projected revenues, or commit to a project. The committee's strategy has been developed over kind of the years, is that we'd like to go to a town meeting in June, which is kind of the beginning of the commitments for fiscal '25 in this case, and go ahead and just set aside the 10%. Then, when the October town meeting comes around, if we have projects for some of these uses, we have these reserve funds we can draw from. But if we don't, we've already made our commitment. We're covered. You know, our preference is to keep the unrestricted account as large as possible, because it's got the most flexibility. We can use it for any of the three purposes. So this would set aside, take care of that set aside requirement. And then we have the administrative budget, which we are, by CPA, allows the town to set aside 5% of projected revenues for administration. We use it for legal costs, consulting, studies, administrative support and things like this. We have found that the $35,000 kind of works for us, so we've never changed it, and we've never spent all of it, or very few years have we spent all of it. And unexpended funds will revert back to be used for projects. So this $35,000 actually represents about 3.4% of the projected revenues in fiscal '25.
Board members, any questions?
There's a special town meeting article.
Yes, and then the last thing is, we have a special town meeting article, which is to move $60,000 from the unrestricted reserves to the open space reserve for fiscal '24. The reason for that is, I didn't correct something in my homework, and so I didn't catch that we needed to do that. So I should have taken care of that in the October town meeting, but didn't. So by moving this money over, that'll cover the rest of the funds needed for the Pascomansett River Water Protection Project. So if we do that in the special town meeting, that'll be sufficient time for those funds to move over and then be available for the closing on that property.
Is that the CPA MOA?
And I apologize for that error.
Seems to be conservation restriction, but, and Rob Almeza could talk about it. I think you should have both of them.
Okay.
That's our, the article 26.
Before we get on to, bring in Mark on that. And board members, have any questions of?
I had a comment. I sat in on the meeting where you reviewed all these programs, possibly the world's longest meeting. The detail was incredible, and all your members paying attention. It's really something. And you talked about housing. And tomorrow, I'm attending the, it's a symposium for Great New Bedford Housing tomorrow for the morning. And the whole idea is to try to stimulate potential housing projects that might be there. And I heard you talk about that in your meeting, about looking for these kinds of larger potential projects that could be for housing.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that, you know, when the CPC is looked at where our expenditures have been in CPA funds, you know, we, it's, it's very weighted towards open space preservation and recreation. I think probably about two-thirds of the funds have been committed for that use. And then the other third is divided almost evenly between historic preservation and housing. It was interesting, I kind of woke up one morning, a couple of months ago, a few months ago, to a Boston Globe editorial about the CPA and the problems with the CPA towns not committing sufficient funds for affordable housing, and in sometimes, in some examples, towns using the CPA to actually kind of be, block affordable housing developments. And I was like, oh, I saw the title. I said, well, you know, it's something we've been concerned about. And that, and the opening paragraph of the Globe editorial was how the town of Dartmouth is one of the few towns in the state that has committed more than 10% of their funds to affordable housing projects, and we need more towns in this state to step up and do that. So I can, you know, wiped a little bit of sweat off my brow, because I think we, we feel we can do, we should be able to do more. But it really means having projects come to us. And so one of the things that the committee is doing now is exploring just that question of, so why don't we see more affordable housing kind of proposals come to the committee for support? What are the things that are barriers to developing affordable housing in a, in a town like Dartmouth? The housing production plan that we're funding is actually going to be real helpful in looking at that. What are the, you know, what are the things we can do in zoning? How do we address the affordability that just with, when you have such a high cost of land and construction? Those are formidable, formidable barriers to, in the end, producing something that can be rented at a reasonable price or sold at a reasonable price. So more to come on that, but we're kind of embarking on really trying to understand why, why we don't see those proposals, or what can we do to, to encourage that.
Be nice to be able to work towards some project that would really make sense that we can focus in on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Buddy.
Any other, any other member? Ms. Brooks?
I have a question. Regarding Articles 3, 4, and 5, they are aligned to work that the Waterways or Harbor Management Plan are involved in. Would it be, could we get some information from either group or both regarding other funds they're going after to fund these projects? I mean, I think it's very nice for CPC, but I want to know in their scope of what they, they've received grant money, and where is it going?
I can provide some clarification. Three of the projects are Seaport Economic Council grants that the town has received. Part of those grants is required a 15% match, so the CPC is funding the match for the town.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just have one big question. I want to test your memory. How many projects has the CPC funded, and what was, and what's been the total amount of money?
I wish I, let me see if I brought that.
Sixty-some. I mean, if, if you don't know, I'll, I'll give you the pass.
You can come real close.
But, maybe at a town meeting, you could say something like that.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're probably up in a range of about 88 awards. Probably, I think we're up in the area, and I will, I will kind of bring that. I think we're in excess of about 13, probably 13 and a half million, I think, is in CPA funds invested. And really, and another 20-some million in leveraged funds, as Sean has indicated. You know, these projects have other monies from the state. Some of our land acquisition preservation has had significant private money committed to these. So, yeah, I will make sure I have those updated totals.
Generally, generally, when I see those final, those cumulative figures, it's usually because somebody's arguing against CPA and CPC.
Yeah.
And then those who are proponents say, hey, look, this is what the town, this is what, this is how it's worked in this town. This is what we've done. So I think it's important that we acknowledge how many projects we've done, and what's the cost, and what other kind of monies have been brought in because of those projects. And I think that's, that's something that, you know, we don't do often enough. And if we've done 88 projects, I'd be interested to find out who's going to be number 100.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and I think, you know, in, in, in closing on that, in that point, I think that's been a really important goal of the CPC, is that, you know, these, the whole point of the CPA is that the residents who have contributed to this see some tangible benefit to it. And so, you know, one of our concerns is to make sure that we can continue to commit these funds to tangible projects, and not just build up, you know, not just hold on to, to money and stuff. And so I think we've been successful, and I, and I have to say, you know, a shout-out to our sponsors, the town being one of the biggest ones, but including the Housing Authority and DNRT and others. They, the projects have all been successful, well-managed. I think of all the funds that we've committed to date, I think 85% have been expended. So, I mean, I think we've had a good track record, and it's important that we maintain the, I think, the confidence of the town. So I agree with you, Sean. It's important to know these numbers, for people to know what those numbers are. So, thank you.
And under, provide some clarification. The CPC just celebrated their 20-year anniversary, so you put together the numbers.
Yeah.
Historic preservation, there's been 2.5 million. Housing's been 2.3 million. And open space has been 9.3 million in projects, for a total of 14.3 in those three categories. And the leveraged projects, you said, that's another 24 million. So for a grand total of $38.6 million.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And 87 projects to date.
That's-
We'll keep updating that number.
It's not a small change. So, okay. Thank you, Buddy. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Buddy, if you want to just stick around for the-
The MOA on the Pascomansett?
The conservation restriction. Rob, I don't know if you want to maybe take it out of order, Article 26, because they overlap.
Yeah, go ahead. Salmy?
The land acquisition for the Pascomansett River aquifer land.
You have actually caught me unaware and unprepared.
I can, I can fill in, so.
Except, once. Somebody's, somebody's got to be, somebody's got to be the mark.
I, I am generally aware, I think we, the Public Works Board dealt with it six weeks ago and approved it. This kind of a project is very important in protecting our source water. And just remember, we like our friends from New Bedford. We rely on them as a backup water source, and they charge us 10 times what it costs to make our own water.
Better, too. It's much better.
So, these kinds of projects are very helpful for two reasons. They protect the resource, but also they help keep higher flows in the river. And as flows drop off, that's where we get cut off from our wellfields. So it's a dual benefit. So this is a good thing, and the Public Works Board has formally supported it.
So the, the funding for this land acquisition comes from a grant from the state that the DPW received, but also a contribution from the Buzzards Bay Coalition, and also from the Community Preservation, Community Preservation Committee. Oh, my God, I'm blanking on that. So three, three entities coming involved to both preserve the land and also use it for water quality in the future. So it's a great project, and part of that, I have that on there, is there's a conservation restriction. The Select Board needs to sign prior to the end of the fiscal year. So I just wanted to make them know of that.
Yeah, and there's one other benefit. I almost forgot. When we go to get permits for our wellfields, these kinds of projects allow us an incremental increase in the amount of water we get to take out. And so what looks like a kind of a picky little detail in this agreement is actually required by DW, Department, DEP, as part of their willingness to increase our permit.
All right, good. Just excellent. Okay, let's see. Next, next we have the conservation bylaw. Article preservation. Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, staff. As the Environmental Affairs Coordinator, I am here today to thank you first for hearing the article, and to present the revised Dartmouth Wetland Protection Bylaw for your review and support. This process has taken nearly two years, a lot of very respectful, but certainly debate. And this has been approved by the Conservation Commission. It was, we had public hearings with the general public, the Conservation Commission, the FINCOM, in which I was informed Friday that the FINCOM had approved recommending this article. And this has gone through town council. They helped us author it. So from a legal standpoint, it has the proper underpinnings to move forward. The bylaw is constantly, as currently constituted, really, it was created in 1990, and really has never been comprehensively reviewed, revised if necessary. And I think after 34 years, it's about time we take a look at it. It's been a good bylaw, nothing wrong with it, but times have changed, and the bylaw has to evolve with those times. I presented several drafts to you, and really, what ended up happening, and what the, the outcome of this presentation is, is we really have clarified the bylaw, we've streamlined it. And one of the things that I noticed is that the old bylaw used a lot of terminology, regulatory terminology and technical terminology, which was never defined clearly. It was just in the narrative. And I think that's a disservice to the public and the users, because when you use terms like freshwater wetland, it would be nice to see what that really is, and not allow interpret- and not allow interpretation of general parlance. So we revised, or we, we added several definitions. We really didn't change them, but we put them in, in the definition section. I have to take a quick note here. On Friday, while I was preparing my comments, I noticed a typo in two of the definitions. So the copy that you have, in freshwater wetlands and coastal wetlands, there is a reference to coastal lands subject to flooding, which should be deleted out of it. And I, we shared that with Sean.
It's, it's in their version.
And, oh, it's in their version?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. So that, the removal of that, those, that term in both of those definitions does not change the definition at all. The definition was actually incorrect with them in there. So that, that's just clarity. Aside from clarifying definitions, what we tried to do was we tried to more clearly segregate the state jurisdiction and the local jurisdiction. They, they've been kind of muddled, and the ongoing practice has been kind of muddled. So we have, we, we wanted to explain the right practice, which is the practice that we have been using for, you know, 30 years, and make the language fit that a little bit more clearly. The other thing that was significant, and this is in addition to the bylaw, and I think it stems from, we've been referencing the harbor management plan, and there was the docks subcommittee. One of the things we, we realized was that we have a proliferation of docks in town, and that's a discussion for another day. But when these docks get damaged, a lot of that debris ends up on public land. And the town has to go out and clean it up at a cost. What we decided to do was to put in a section where if you have a permitted dock, and it gets destroyed or damaged, and the town has to go in and clean it up, you have to pay for that cleanup if you want to rebuild your dock. And unfortunately, we're constrained to that limitation by state law. However, even with that limitation, that's more than we have today. So I think that, that's a big improvement to at least that small portion of what we permit. And we see, it, it fluctuates, but we see a proliferation of dock applications. Then they drop off for maybe a year and a half, and then they crop up again. Everybody wants their own dock on their own place. So that, that I think is a helpful tool. What the Conservation Commission wants the town to understand is this revision in no way expands the current jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It's the same commission. They're not choosing to take a bigger bite out of the apple, nor does work to change the intent of the current bylaw. It is there just to clarify that bylaw and make it an easier read and a clearer segregation of processes and procedures. Conservation asks on behalf of the town that the Select Board, as well as the FINCOM has already done, support this bylaw to town meeting. I'll take any questions.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Brooks, any questions? Shaking the head, I say that's no.
No.
All right. So as, as part of town meeting that was here at the genesis of this bylaw back in 1990, I can see what you're attempting to do. And actually, I think it's, it's, it's great. It's passe de. And I, yeah, you're right. Because there have been times when I've sat on some conservation, listening to some of the terminology, it's like, what do they mean? So, and I, and I'm glad this is, this is going to be done, because it's, if it makes it easier for someone to come in to deal with a wetlands issue, then I'm all for it, you know? And I think this is 34 years in the making. I mean, we've had a good, we've had a good run. I know when this first came about, you know, not too many communities were out there that were dealing with, you know, conservation issues and, and dealing with, you know, wetlands and whatnot. And I know Dartmouth worked hand in hand with Falmouth and Barnstable at the time to get this, to get theirs. And now there are communities that look at Dartmouth and say, hey, look, we need to do what Dartmouth is doing. And so now by doing this, I think this is, this maintains Dartmouth's position as one of the, you know, one of the leaders in the Commonwealth in conservation. So I appreciate this. I applaud it, and I thank you for it.
Well, it's interesting that you make that comment, because I was going to say, Mr. Tattelbaum asked about the planning board and who did they model? And I was sitting here going, we don't have to answer that question because they're calling us.
Well, I know, I know when we first started out, it was, you know, there was heavy discussions with Falmouth, with Barnstable in developing, you know.
Well, that was the first iteration of bylaws, really.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. And then after Dartmouth had done it and completed it and started putting it into implementation, then other communities started looking at Dartmouth and the way we handle our conservation issues. So that I do know for a fact. So we maintain that leadership, and I love it. So, great job, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. All this now leads us to the warrant itself.
So you want me to just give an overview of each of the articles? And then Gary's here too. He can go over some of it. So I'll start. The CPC articles are up through seven. Article number eight, these are housekeeping appropriation from the cemetery silverlot fund. That's $2,000. Article nine, establish the FY25 maximum spending budget for revolving funds. This is related to cemetery, recreation, and park, and library. Those are the same as the previous year. And the capital planning committee report, I think Gary can come up and give an overview on that, along with the Schedule A. But I'll do, he'll do 10, I'll do 11, and then.
Okay. The majority, the first, first 50% of the articles is all housekeeping articles.
They are similar.
The yearly housekeeping articles. Hey, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I think first of all, we'll do the, the Schedule A and look at the.
I don't know if you want to do the capital planning committee report. That's Article 10, just to kind of go in order.
Okay, sure. So this year, we met with the CIPC and had several meetings with, with them and the departments that were involved, DPW, Parks and Rec, Police, IT. And, you know, there's a greater need than just the amount of money that we can fund for CIPC. The ask for fiscal 25 was about $23.5 million. And these are short-term items that the departments are coming up with. That includes water and sewer. That includes every other department that we met, we met with. Now, we certify about $5.4 million in free cash each year. So obviously, you can see that we're trying to stretch as much as we can for what these departments are asking for. And that doesn't even consider the larger long-term projects that we're looking at doing. So CIPC went through, and, and as you see here in Article 10, the items that they felt were the most important, we, they rate those on a level of, you know, the highest priority, if you will. Starting with the Dartmouth Public Schools, you'll see that last year, the fire chief, I think in two of the three districts, talked about the need for the upgrading of the fire system. So there was a small contribution, but at least it's a contribution and a start to getting that moving forward. They're doing flooring replacement, technology, some vehicles that they need also, which totals 615,000. DPW, Smithneck Road, 150,000, and the rate and efficiency study for 35,000. The Highway Division, road maintenance and improvements. Typically, we fund that, about $1 million each year. But because we had already spent some money in the, in the fall, we're, we're giving them 200,000, the CIPC is giving them 200,000. A dump truck, a brush chipper, and then another truck with a plow. Water Enterprise Fund, the treatment of the plant, the clear well and backwash supply system, 200,000, and the PFAS evaluation for 50,000. Sewer Enterprise, 50,000 for SCADA, and the WPCF upgrade evaluation that they're working on for 250,000. And the solid waste enterprise for a roll-off truck, cabin chassis for 286,000. Waterways Management, Dais Landing, Dinghy Marina for 20,000, and 14,850 for the rack replacement. So the total in aggregate that we were able to, that CIPC was able to fund was 2.3 million. Of that, the breakout is 1.4 million certified free cash from the town side, and then 286 for solid waste, 250 for retained earnings from the water, 300,000 for sewer, and 34,850 for the waterways. So the, the total amount was 2.3 million, because we had already spent the, the remaining of that at the fall town meeting.
Gary, just to, just on one question, on the, on the Smithneck Road design, maybe Mr. Almy can also help me with that. It was discussed approximately three years ago, if not four, pre-COVID, of extending, using the water, using the waterways, having a waterway, I can't think, remember the name exactly. But basically, there was discussion of extending the sidewalk on Smithneck Road all the way down to Bayview. And I'm wondering if that is part of this, or can it be part of this design? We have a harbor. There isn't too much in the way of public access to that harbor. And, but, there are a ton of people who walk along Smithneck Road in the roadway. I want, I would prefer that they walk on a sidewalk safely to view the harbor. And one of my really, really, really big wishless items is that sidewalk on Smithneck Road. Can the DPW make that a reality?
Well, one issue is the storms.
This is a study. This is a study. This is not the funding.
So first of all, I could not agree with you more. I drove here tonight and came up Smithneck Road, and there were three kids on scooters and a bicycle, and runners coming the other way, and people running dogs. And I went to the middle of the road. Had there been a car coming, we all would have gone at the walking pace. So it is extremely dangerous. I think a sidewalk is a great road. I think there are, are there alternatives there. And I think if we can fold those in, that they need to be included. Because I don't think it's a matter of just paving the road here. There's more to it.
I know the town is, has been extremely lucky in, in receiving monies from the Seaport Council. And I would almost beg to differ that a nice, brand-new walkway to look at the harbor would fit right into a Seaport Council grant. So, I mean, come on, guys. Let's get this done.
Again, Mr. McDonnell, I'll say that in a few storms, the road has been washed away, and the underpinnings of the road have been washed away. So I think part of the study is looking at how to avoid the continuation of the road being washed away. And a raised walkway may help with the water coming over and onto the road, but it has to be part of that design.
I mean, if they can put a walkway on a dike, we can put a walkway on Smithneck Road.
Well, you might need a dike under the road. But that's part of the alternatives analysis.
Right. And that's part of the plan. So at least put it in the plan. Let's see what it looks like.
Alternatives first, focus down, figure out what makes sense, and then go forward with it. I got it.
But the potential of storm damage is right.
I would also, you know, something I'll say about.
Yeah, I, I actually went, have down, crossed police lines politely, explaining who I was, to take photographs of the high tide and the wave action. So I understand this business. And I'm also, have had some experience with coastal resources. And in a world where that water keeps coming up and up and up, we got to get creative. And maybe what we're going to do is resilient, but not forever. But again, that's what alternatives are.
I would, I'd just like to add that here we had a request for $23 million in short-term capital projects. And we can, we're going to fund, at this point, a couple million. We have roads that probably could take $5 or $10 million a year, and we're spending this, this is 200,000. If there ever was a need for sensible, long-term planning and how we pay for that, this is the perfect example of why we need to continue on this process. All these projects are worthwhile. But having a plan and putting it out in a way that makes sense in how we pay for it is what's going to get this done.
I'll just make one more statement about the storm damage, I'll call it, not only to the road, but the storm is washing sand across the road and into the salt marsh, which is then creating an environmental concern in the salt marsh. So we have a bunch of groups that need to sit down and talk about figuring out how to limit the wave action coming up and across Smithneck Road. And I think this item here, which is just $150,000 for road design, is a step in the right direction.
I do too.
Yeah. So the, obviously, the commitment, as Mr. Tattelbaum had mentioned, the commitment of 23 million is, we can only, I don't want to say these are Band-Aid approaches, but in order to maintain the level of maintenance on a lot of these projects that don't end up turning into larger projects, this is what this, this, this funding does. And CIPC knows that. And so even on the short term, these are very important projects to complete.
Absolutely.
Okay. So any other questions?
You can say that, but I'll just go, Article 11, this is placeholder appropriation for collective bargaining agreements. We think we're close to coming to an agreement with one of our outstanding bargaining units. We hope to know this week, so we'll incorporate it, but we wanted to leave that in here. Article 12, salaries and stipends of elected officials. This is the town clerk salary and also board and committee members, which there are no salaries for those.
Really? I thought that was going to be changed.
There's discussion pretty much annually, but.
There's no discussion annually. Everybody just says, oh, we get it, and we move on.
That's true. That's the discussion.
Not true, yes.
And Article 13 is the Schedule A.
So on the Schedule A, just to thank the Finance Committee, some of the members are here tonight working with, with us closely to get this resolved. And voting on, I think this is the, well, this is the first time that the budget is over $100 million this year. It's 103 million and change. And some, I'll go over some of the larger items that, that are the big swingers here. So we were replenishing the Finance Committee's reserve fund to 510,000. Last year, that, that was drawn down because we had given the complement to the school. That's one of the biggest items. And a couple, another big item is obviously, you know, the, the board knows that the insurance, our health insurance is, is increased. We're looking at 10% increase this year. So that is substantial. That's another big line item. And then contractual increases amongst all these departments that have unions. And that's also built in here. Smaller items like shelter cost increase for animals, not significant, but it's, it's worth noting. Health Department, also deer population is up. So having to maintain that, and the Health Department's budget has increased slightly on that. And I believe that was it for the, for the larger items.
One item is the IT software.
IT, 150,000.
Annual maintenance agreements have gone up significantly. He's been able to incorporate it, but this year it had to go up 150,000 to really get caught up to the, the increases. So the technology, it provides a lot of online services, but it comes with a cost.
So the budget this year is 103,653,491, which the Finance Committee has recommended.
Has Finance voted on that?
Yes.
You know what the vote was?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Oh, great.
7-0-0.
Excellent.
Gary, what is, what's our, what's our current debt ratio? In other words, where we are debt as compared to, we.
We're at.
5%, 2%, 3%?
Under 3%. And I think we went through this with the long-term capital plan, and the average in the state is 7%.
I thought it was 1, 1 and 1/2 percent.
Yeah, 1 and 1/2. I think it was like under 3, but it might be 1. I can look up the exact. I think it was like under three, but it might be one, I can look up the exact number.
You gave us, do you think it's changed since?
No, it's one and a half.
Yeah, one and a half, yeah.
And the average is just over seven with the state.
So, if you look at the contribution of debt in the budget, it's decreasing, obviously, because we're paying down the debt that we have. For a town our size, we have about seven point five billion dollars in assessed value. So, out of that, two hundred and fifty million is borrowing capacity. So, we have nearly, we have nearly nowhere near that kind of debt in the books. Even with the police station, the library, we're still, have plenty of capacity to borrow for long-term projects.
We're all done with the high school, correct?
Correct.
You mean the new high school?
The high school, there's only one high school.
Twenty-two years old, yeah.
There's only one high school, so.
Not new.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I mean, I knew at some point in time we hit a hundred million, so, I mean, you know, but then again, so is a lot of other communities our size, so.
Yeah, and we've, we've asked, through the budget process, we've asked the departments to live within the three percent, the guidelines. And we're happy to say that the majority of those departments have, including the schools. We know that going forward, that it's going to be a difficult year next year. We keep on saying it's a difficult year this year and a difficult year next year, but we know that. And we've worked closely with the schools. Not only that, but we've avoided the override this year, but we don't know next year what that might, that might entail. You know, we may have, we may have to revisit this again if, if in fact, we see costs continue to escalate. But we do ask, and they do, the departments do comply with the three percent.
Okay. All right, so this is, we will, seeing this at about, what, six weeks?
I think.
Six weeks? Okay.
And Article fourteen, funding of sewer and septic system betterments. This is the usual housekeeping article. And then now we have enterprise funds. Gary, if anyone can start with the Article fifteen?
So, the enterprise funds, as you know, is not part of the general fund budget. These are funded by water and sewer rate users, fees. And when we build these budgets, the DPW, the board meets and they determine what the rate would be. Last year, I believe, they started a process where they're actually building in a little bit of contingency into these budgets where they're building a little bit more reserve. If you looked at the last ten years of the, of their rate increases, some of those rate increases were zero. So, a zero rate increase is now a negative rate increase because they were able to generate revenue to support projects, future projects. So, not speaking for the DPW Board, I think that that's their, their policy. So, Article fifteen is the solid waste. Again, we have the expenses and then the revenues that generate to offset the expenses, which balance one point, one million nine hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars is recommended. The Article ten, excuse me, Article sixteen is for the Water Department Enterprise Fund. Again, six point one, six million one seventy-nine, three twenty-five is the recommended budget. And, okay, and then Article seventeen is the Sewer Department Enterprise Fund. Six million nine thousand, six thirty-five is the budget. And also DCTV Enterprise Fund, Article eighteen, six hundred and fifteen thousand, four dollars. And lastly is the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund, Article nineteen, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And as you, as the Board knows, that we charge back indirect costs to these, these funds as, as the budgets increase, sort of those indirect costs increase back to the town.
Yes, fully aware of that.
Has FinCom voted on these enterprise funds? Same unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gary, can you explain the sole and net metering credits for me?
So, on the, on each, each individual or just in?
No, no, in general, in general.
So, what, what happens with, with the sole and net metering credits is the larger the department, you'll see a smaller department generate a smaller credit. So, we're in an aggregation, I don't know, maybe Sean can explain this a little bit better than, than I can, an aggregation of what we get in return for credits and what we pay out on a bill, actually. So, it's, it's the difference between that, that, that kind of variance that gets placed into the budgets. So, you'll see smaller budgets have smaller amounts, where the larger budgets like water and sewer have larger amounts for sole and medium rate credits. And that's split out amongst the town. The town side also gets.
Yes.
Gets, gets the sole and net metering credits.
We need to pay out.
To get reimbursed.
We need to pay out the credits to get reimbursed. We get reimbursed more.
Okay, all right.
We have to pay out in order to get that. That's part of the way the agreement works.
Okay.
Next is the salary adjustments.
Salary, personal bylaw salary adjustments. This is just beach rake operator compensation pay. As you may recall, last year, we hired just a person to come in to rake the beaches on a kind of contractual basis. This is fifty dollars an hour to do that work. Library tech, less than fifteen hours, just changing the compensation pay to twenty to twenty-six dollars an hour. And then also the Assistant Recreation Director, part-time position is nineteen dollars per hour. Article twenty-one, Establishment of Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund. This is part of the Long-Term Capital Planning Committee's initiative and the Capital Planning Committee's initiative to create a stabilization fund for long-term capital projects. Article twenty-two is the appropriation to that fund of one million dollars to get it started. Could be more or less in upcoming years, but it's a good start for that fund.
I have a question on both of those.
Good.
Before we go on. On Article twenty-one, I'm, I know that Long-Term Capital Plan has been talking about projects that are long-term, but some of them are going to be short-term. Some are going to have to work on sooner than others. Is it possible to just call it a capital stabilization fund? That way, it doesn't imply that this is money that we're going to be adding to it and not taking advantage of in, in a near-term way? I'm just concerned that it says long-term makes it sound like.
We, we thought about that. So, I think that the intent of the stabilization fund is for long-term capital planning, but the wording is such that for the purpose of funding and implementing capital improvements, it does not say long-term capital improvements, it just says capital improvement. So, it covers both.
And on Article twenty-two, not, I don't, what is the, what, what budget do we have that is, funding do we have that we can put away a million dollars? Is that safe, or should we be putting in a smaller number?
No, we've, we've.
At this, at the April town, at the June town meeting, and then more money in October?
Well, we could just do it, the, the town could decide to just fund it annually, it could not decide to fund it annually. It's just really, the, the funds are available this year to establish the fund, and it's coming from surplus revenue. And then next year, there may or not, may not be any money, there may be an excessive amount, so we don't know, but it's just something to get it started. It can be used, if it needs to be used in the fall first, anything, or in three years for something, so it's, there's a lot of flexibility in the account.
Okay.
Has that been voted on by FinCom? Both articles? Thank you.
Just asking a question, just, FinCom voted on all the articles?
Not all of them. They have one financial article left to vote on, hence the compensation. So, they've, they're going to be voting on the majority of them tomorrow night.
Right, okay, thank you. Just wanted to, that way I can save you some time.
Article twenty-three, the zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling units, you heard about that. Article twenty-four is the amendments to the wetlands bylaw provisions, you heard about that from Mr. Garrett. Article twenty-five, sorry, trying to zip through here.
That's the sale of the land.
Yes, this is the sale of land, the old police station site, the board wanted to review the options of selling the site. This is the wording that goes along with that. As you know, we're still waiting to get the appraisal done. We hope to have it by the end of May in time for town meeting. Article twenty-six, the land acquisition in Pasco Mancet River Aquifer.
Another question.
About that.
On twenty, want to wait to ask it now on twenty-five? You know, it's the first time that we've seen the language of what it's going to come out to be. And I understand we don't have the, and the reason why we don't have the assessed, assessed amount out there, but I guess the purpose of this, the way it's written, is to give, the logic here is town meeting, you say, yes, we want to try to sell it, and we leave it up to the select board to create and with advisory, with advice to come up with a plan that was acceptable if and when it's good enough to sell it. So, it's, it's a pretty open, the idea is, it's a pretty open book as to what the options are.
Well, as far as, I don't want to say it's open. You need, in order for the select board to sell any town property, it has to go before town meeting. Town meeting has to grant permission.
I understand.
So, that's the first, that's the first step, is the permission. Whether the board decides to sell it, then that's a different story.
Agreed.
So, but you need, you need, you need permission to do so in order to, to either do it or not do it.
No, my point is that I understand the town board would give this board permission to try to sell it, but this language seems to say that we, as a group, can come up with a plan as to what the parameters are and then go out and try to do it, and then, and then decide whether the parameters are met and decide whether they want to sell it or not. That part of it's a fairly open book.
I can provide some clarification on that. We weren't sure, so town council did some research. Because the town purchased the land originally, we had to go back to the original deed from the eighteen hundreds, I think, the, the, the select board can set the price if town meeting decides to sell. If the land had been donated in any capacity, town meeting would have to approve of the price that the land would be sold for.
Well, it's, it's not just the price as to whom and what the purpose might be, which is going to be left up to us, and maybe go through a public process, decide if it fits that, fits those goals. But it is fairly open as to what our options are as a board.
Well, excuse me, can I? So, I think, talking about the old police station, the town, town meeting voted almost unanimously to take that building down, and that's still on the books. That's still open. It still gives the opportunity to the select board, at this point, to, to take the building down if we had three votes tomorrow. That's the way, according to our town attorney. Just want to let everybody know, that's still on the books.
Want to move on? Yep. Article twenty-six, Pasco Mancet River Aquifer Land acquisition, you heard about that. Article twenty-seven, this is a citizen's petition. I've asked the attorney to come in, he was out of town today, so he's going to be in next week on the, the next meeting on the sixth, to talk about adding an additional license. And twenty-eight, the charter amendment articles, I don't know if Ms. Brooks wants to go over those. Twenty-eight is the omnibus article, the town council's still working on the wording, but I believe twenty-nine through thirty-four, are the wording is correct.
And I'm happy to go over them. I'll explain the omnibus corrections article is really looking at the, all the corrections that were made, scribner's errors, either capitalizing words or adding correct punctuation, none of which would change the charter, it's just cleaning it up. And I will admit that we, it's been daunting and certainly daunting for Anthony Savistano trying to find exactly how to word this and how to include thirty-one plus or pages of charter into the warrant, but that's what we're still working on. We have held one item out, which we will be presenting in October, which had to do with the possibility of adding electronic voting at town meeting. That one we're holding. There was another article that we needed to separate. So, I'll, I'll go through them. I'm looking at rationale. So, the Board of Assessors, the Charter Review Committee has asked that the Board of Assessors be moved from elected board to an appointed board. We're hoping that this change would allow to seek a larger pool of candidates with experience in the field that may not want to run for office. The same would be true with, with the article regarding the Board of Health. Again, we're looking to move the Board of Health from an elected to an appointed board and hoping that a larger pool of candidates with experience in the field who may not want to campaign would be interested. The Dartmouth Historic Commission, this article is actually one that we've been in communication with the board. They have been a board of nine for many years, and they have been a board of nine that has not been able to seat nine in many years. They are currently seating seven and very happy with the size of that board. So, we are asking to reduce the, permanently in the charter, the number from nine to seven members of the Historic Commission. In the Board of Public Works, and this has been batted around a bit, and let me just spring back, I'm looking at the rationale, but let me spring back to the language that, hang on, want to look at the correct language that, because we went back and forth with Mr. Savistano, certainly he has far more experience than anyone on the Charter Commission in how to write an article that would be agreeable to the Attorney General's office, et cetera. So, in the article, currently, the Board of Public Works is involved in hiring the superintendent and affixing composition. This is saying that the first sentence of section four point five C be deleted and replaced with the following, "The select board shall appoint for a term of not more than three years and shall fix the compensation of the superintendent of Public Works who shall exercise and perform under the supervision and directions such of the powers, rights, duties assigned to it under subsection B, as it may from time to time designate." The Board of Public Works is an appointed board, and currently they are the only board that is appointed board, that is responsible for hiring and affixing compensation and trying to align all boards correctly. We just wanted to put that board and its responsibilities in line with all other appointed boards. And, I'm sorry, I spoke of these out of order earlier. We had to move, we had suggested a article to the town meeting that incorporated both Parks and Rec and Select Board, and Attorney Savistano said that we had to take those separately. Currently, this is where the, a little bit of confusion is going to be. Currently, in the town charter, the Select Board and the Board of Parks and Rec are voted in by single seat. So, this past election, Mr. Tattelbaum took out papers for his seat. Mr. O'Neil took out papers for the seat being vacated by Frank Grayson. That's in the Select Board side. In the Parks and Rec side, in the charter, it was approved many moons ago that they should have been running in that same way, running for single seats. Ironically, there was a misconnection between whichever town clerk was in office when that was first voted in. It was not Sarah Haskell, this happened prior to her, Sarah Haskell Aruda, sorry, happened prior to her, but over these years, Parks and Rec should have been elected as the Select Board has. It has not been. We, on the Charter Review, are asking that the Board of Parks and Rec go back to being a board that is elected as they are elected currently, which is anyone taking out papers to sit on the Board of Parks and Rec. If there's two seats available and three people running, the top two vote getters get the seats on Parks and Rec. So, it has to be a charter article, even though that's not how it's been doing. We need the charter to reflect how it, it runs. That being said, great discussions on charter. The charter members voted also to change the way that the Select Board runs. And they can certainly talk on town meeting floor or at a future Select Board meeting, should you like them to come en masse, about the merits of having all Select Board members rather than running for single, our single seat, but to run as a group election. That way, no one is ever unchallenged, and the top vote getters, getters would be elected to the board. Again, if there is one seat and one member running, or if there are two seats available, all people would be in the same pool and would run opposing each other. So, if there's two seats available, three, four, five candidates running, it would be the top two. it would be the top two vote getters that get the seats on the board. And that's Article 34 on the Charter Amendment. Finally, Library Board of Trustees, and we, as, as the Select Board, we have heard from the Board of Library Trustees previously, the State Library Board suggests that they have six members. They're the only board currently that seats an even number of members to the board. In our discussions, we wanted all boards to have an odd number of members to prevent any ties, as it were. So the charter member, the Charter Review Committee is suggesting that the board be reduced from, currently from six to five. And Anthony Savistano, we had to, we had to put in here exactly how that would happen. So you will see that it says at the first election, only of the members of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library, after the adoption of the section, two members shall be elected for a full three-year term, two members shall be elected for a two-year term, one member shall be elected to a one-year term, two persons receiving the highest vote, blah, blah, blah. What we talked about, he, he, I believe he's going to be tweaking that language. So that the election that would happen in 2026, if there is two seats available, we would be running for one seat that election. That's the last conversation I had with him, and that's not the language here. So that's my confusion. I know I whipped through those, any questions?
No, if, if Article 35, which is the Library Board of Trustees, was adopted and then voted on by the voters in 2025, then there would have to be a, then everybody on the Library Board of Trustees would have to run for their, for their seats. It would be open-ended, and the top five vote getters would be apportioned. The way, that's the way this board was done when it went from three to five. Way back when, long ago. And on the, on the Select Board, if I remember correctly, which I do, the vote was not unanimous to make that change on the Charter Commission. There was one person against.
So the charter, um, the, you know, we're putting, our task was to put these changes to the town meeting. Town meeting's task is to put these potential changes to the voters. And that's what it says at the top of each article, to see if the town will vote to submit to the voters of the town for approval the following amendment to the town charter. So it doesn't, nothing is set in stone when the Select Board sends it to town meeting. Nothing is set in stone when town meeting approves it to go to the bo, vote, voters. It's only set in stone once the voters vote, which at this point would be April 2025.
Right, and that's the difference between an, an appointed Charter Commission and an elected Charter Commission. An appointed Charter Commission has to go to town meeting in order to get their recommendations before the voters. An elected Charter Commission totally skips town meeting and goes directly to the voters. So just to kind of throw that out there for you. And the only ones who can call for an elected Charter Commission is this board.
Right. And as we've stated before, this committee, the Charter Review Committee, has been diligently working since 2020, four years, so.
Yes.
We're ready, we're ready to move on now.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
You're welcome.
We have comments on?
Go right ahead.
First, regarding the changes for the Select Board and the, regarding the vote, my position. I, I would, I would like to hear at some point the pros and cons of why we should change or why we should leave it alone, because I think it's an issue that has a lot of twists to it, and.
Well, in essence, this is, this is what, the change, really the change in the select, in the Park and Recreation is changing what is in the language now as compared to what's being practiced.
No, I understand that.
So that's, that's, that's the key. So what is, what should have been done is the members of the Parks and Recreation should be chosen by lot. You run for each seat, seat one, two, three, or five, as is the Select Board. The Select Board currently, you have to choose your seat. So in essence, do you, do you want to choose your Select Board like your school committee, which is the top two vote getters? If there's two seats open, the top two get it. Or you go after the person. Personally, I voted against this. I want, I, if you have a problem with me, come after me and my seat. If you have a problem with somebody else, that's up to you. That's, I, then I have the right, then I have to prove my worth for any reelection.
Okay.
That's, that's just me, you know?
I will.
And unfortunate, and I'll be honest with you, I've been very fortunate because three out of my five terms, I've been running on the post, which tells me that I'm doing a damn good job and nobody, and everybody just says, hey, way to go. So that's the way I look at it. Hey, I have to, you gotta be, you know, yeah, you have to look at it that way, okay? I'm not going to say I'm doing a lousy job and I'm going to run, you know, nobody wants to run against me.
I also want to just let the board know that this discussion in charter started really with, why don't we push the school committee to run like the Select Board and run for individual seats? And for that matter, why don't we look for all elected committees to run the way the school, the Select Board run? And you choose your, your seat, and you either defend your position if someone challenges you, or. It's one, it was one of those discussions, and it was going along famously, and then someone interjected a little bit of different information. And next thing we knew, we were going, everybody, every group was going to go for the full law highest vote getter. So that's a committee for you.
I understand, you, you gave me your personal opinion. Anybody else, I'd like to hear about what, for the same reason why you want to keep it the way it is. I'd like to hear.
What?
Leave it as it is.
I just gave it to you.
No, no, anybody else having a, an additional perspective is a why?
I'm giving you as a Charter Commission member.
As an additional perspective besides that one. As to why we should leave it alone and keep it as it is. Is there anything else to add? So simply, the idea is you can target a candidate and, and, and run against it, is that's the?
Run on your record.
Right.
Okay.
It worked pretty, pretty well for all these years.
I'm not debating it, I just like to know the reason. So there's no other reason, just so you can target a particular candidate?
Run on your record.
Okay.
That's, that's how I feel. If I'm going to run again, I'm running on my record.
So therefore, it's a top.
I'm not gonna, I'm, I don't want to. I, I want, I want my record to speak for itself and not be come, somebody who comes in either first or second place.
Well, if your record's pretty good, you may end up with the most amount of votes anyway, so that's the same indication.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean.
If you, but you could have a lot, you could have 10 people running. So that's going to dive, obviously dilute that, that total.
Ironically, if this goes to town meeting and they approve it, and it goes then to the election, it will be on the ballot in April 2025. However, Select Board candidates who are running in April 2025 will run just as we always have.
Right.
It's not until after the election and seeing how it.
It will be 2026.
How it fares, it will impact it for the April 2026 election.
Has FinCon voted on this one?
They have not, no, we won't have one.
Okay. I have an additional comment regarding the DPW. As my colleagues know, I've been meeting on a regular basis and trying to get into the guts of DPW to try to, to try to do the best we can because it's a, it's not only an important department, but there's more and more projects going forward, and more than ever. My view is that this, this change just merely scratches the surface in my view as to what needs to be done in that department in terms of structure and how, who and how people report to. And I think it's an inappropriate time to address this issue. I think it needs major surgery going forward.
David, I understand where you're going with this. But this changes, this changes only one thing. It doesn't change the structure of the DPW, it doesn't, it doesn't change the, how the DPW works. That's still within our purview. What this does is this gives this board the appointment power, along with the DPW, of the superintendent of DPW and affixes compensation. Right now, the DPW board can choose the superintendent and, and come up with what their contract is. We do, we do all the other department heads in this town.
Well, we need.
This department head we do not do because of the current language. This, all this, this is all this does. As far as the machinations of the DPW and the inner workings of the DPW and how the DPW is going to be done, this does not address that. That, what you want to address is something that comes later. So if it's just this charter amendment.
That's my point.
It's just a charter amendment.
That's my point.
It's just removing, it's just changing the way the superintendent of DPW is appointed. And who, who is responsible for fixing his compensation? That's all.
Uh, well, all it does is make it more messy because.
No, it doesn't make it more messy.
Now, Sean, that's your opinion. And I respect your opinion. Right now, we have issues about who reports to whom and what the authority is. And this is going to muddy the waters even more.
David.
And all I'm saying is it's not the time to do it. The, the time to do it is to overhaul the relationship between this DPW and the Select Board.
David, I, I respectfully, I think what you're trying to do is you're trying to create something there that's not this. Gary reports, in essence, to us. The assessor, the head of assessing, reports to us. Chris Vitale reports to us, town administrator reports to us. It's, we, we look at their contracts, we, we negotiate their contracts, we assign their contracts, we sign their contracts. The DPW is one of the largest departments in this town that the town Select Board does not negotiate. All this does is brings that negotiation to the Select Board, period. How you want to address the DPW and its hierarchy and how it operates is entirely different from this charter amendment. That's all it is. It's, I know where you want to go with it, and I agree with you 100%.
Well, you made your point, but I, we disagree.
Okay. Mr. Almy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Almy, I'm the Chair of the Public Works Board. Tonight, however, since the Public Works Board has not had an opportunity to consider this particular amendment, I'm speaking for myself. I request that you defer this warrant item. It needs discussion, it needs the Public Works Board to talk with the Charter Commission, or, excuse me, the Charter Committee, and that hasn't happened. You appointed the Public Works Board, you appointed me. You can ask any one of us for our resignation tonight or at any time. You report, you appointed us with the responsibility to oversee DPW, contracts, payrolls, that kind of thing. That's a responsibility. You get, also gave us, the charter gave us the authority to appoint the DPW director. That means authority and responsibility are together as they should be. I, I have, I'd like to, and I'll keep this short. I have three reasons to ask you to defer this. First is that there hasn't been any meaningful discussion with the DPW board. It just hasn't happened. There are reasons for that. We will, we can have a special meeting, meet with the committee at, at, I think we have about a 72-hour lead time to have that kind, set up that discussion legally under the open meeting law. There's no reason to do this now. There's no hiring of a DP director on the horizon. Within a year, we're likely to have a new town administrator. And that town administrator should have input on this, I think. And there's no real good explanation from our perspective as to why this is happening because we successfully negotiated a contract, working closely with the board. And it may be that we went back and forth on the salary, but on the other hand, that's the kind of thing that happens in contract negotiations. That's all I really have to say. Again, I'm asking you to defer this one item until we can have a meaningful discussion between the committee and the DPW board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm assuming that's.
Well, we're not, we're not voting on the warrant this evening.
Right, we're not voting on the warrant this evening.
There's some special town.
Right.
Gary, do you want to talk about this? I can't remember where we left off with the, the third one, but we did the first one with CPC. The second one is appropriation for a previously approved capital project. This is the sum of $57,736.97 for the, from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purpose of covering costs incurred as part of the June 2019 spring annual town meeting Violetta Wells article. This is just a carryover, Gary, if you want to give a little more detail on that.
Article, uh, two. So, so that we don't incur cost of borrowing, we use the surplus revenue to fix the amount and pay for the additional funding that's needed in, in this article. So this is 57, this is for the, from the water, for the Violetta Well issue that we had. So we're using $57,736.97 out of surplus, their surplus revenues, which we have the capacity to, instead of borrowing for that, that addition, which would cost the town additional monies to do, do so. So we take it out of the surplus revenue, that's what this article does, or intends to do.
Next one?
So yes, Article 3, under the same fashion, $359,804.84. This was for the Veterans Memorial Stadium. There wasn't enough money borrowed at the time when this project went through. It's not that they ran in a deficit, they, it just, there wasn't enough money borrowed. So we do have the money in, in the available retained earnings to do this, but we, and again, would not want to borrow because it would cost money for the town to go out and conventionally borrow for this. So this is coming from free cash.
Okay, and those are the two warrants.
All right. That's from the previous Memorial Stadium project? Thank you.
Yes.
You don't have the scope of this, do you? The actual scope of what they're going to do with this extra money now, $360,000?
This is already.
It's already been spent, it's already been taken care of, it's, this is to pay the bill.
The previous project.
This is to pay the bill.
Okay.
Yeah, the project's already, that piece of the project's already been, already been taken care of.
The building in the back, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Dartmouth Preserve rental rate approval. Mr. Vitale?
For the preserve.
Good evening, Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So inside your packet, you have a brief memo from me. I know I was before you last year to go over the rates that are being proposed. There are updated amounts for this year. This after review is in line with HUD's, HUD's income limits for FY 2024. So if I can pull up my numbers real briefly. So the net rent for a two-bedroom that's proposed is $1583, and a three-bedroom is $1681. This is a 9.9, so almost 10% increase from 2023. I also will note that that increase will keep the utility rate level funded compared to last year, but it is comparable to. but it is comparable to what's out there, just, again, rising costs associated with housing.
We have to vote on this?
We have to vote, it's gonna be a vote on this.
And just, one item of note, so the, the preserve, they have not started construction, construction yet, so...
They haven't put a shovel in the ground yet.
Chris will probably be back here next year to talk about the rates again. So these are just really placeholder rates.
But we still have to do this.
Yes, it's left to approve.
No choice. We did it last year, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions? Okay. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
He said yes, okay.
Yes.
He said it early, that's okay. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay, and as I did last year, I voted no. I'll vote no, 4-1.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the ARPA funding request for the Rogers Street boat ramp.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
It's me again. So before you this evening is a request on behalf of the Waterways Management Commission, requesting $50,000 from our ARPA contingency line. This would support the town's project for the Rogers Street boat ramp design. This past year, we received $250,000 through the Seaport Economic Council to redesign that ramp, obviously increase additional access for residential boaters, commercial boaters, and hopefully increase the utilization of the town-owned lot over there. The match for that grant is the $50,000. So that's why we're here this evening, to request those funds and get the project started.
That's good math. Yeah.
Excellent. All right, board, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
Mr. McDonald?
Is there a second?
Excuse me, we got a hand over here.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Take the microphone away.
Peter, get ready on the switch, okay?
Good evening, Kevin Murphy. I'm a member of the Waterways Commission. This is an important project that is gonna dovetail with a Seaport Economic Council grant that's already been awarded to New Bedford down at the Community Boating Center. And we have been awarded the $250,000 already, as you're aware. And it's a significant grant. The $250,000 does a feasibility study. It'll do the engineering and the permitting, which is a long and lengthy process that requires a substantial amount of money. That's why $250,000 was requested. And just calling back Chairman McDonald's comment earlier this morning about Seaport Economic Council money possibly available for the, for over at Smith Road. I, I think it would certainly behoove us to accept the money that they've already given us for a project. And I think this is an important project, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Is there a second to Mr. Mickelson's?
I'll second.
Mr. Tattelbaum? Okay, on the motion, any questions? Okay, ready to vote? Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Approved. And Ms. Lee. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a request from the Tree Committee.
Been here a long time.
Yeah, you're getting, started getting rooting over there, huh?
Forgotten why I'm here. But thank you for having me. Yep, I'm requesting that you take down two trees. I think you got this sheet. Town Hall Tree Revival Project. Take it down, two dead trees, I might say. I've been out there and wrapped them in orange and, and planting two new trees. I drew a sketch of where the new trees are gonna go. In order to carry this through correctly, actually spatial-wise out there, a big request is that the flag box be moved to a better location. I keep looking in the flag box, and I don't think too many people drop off flags. I know it's important.
Oh, they do.
Do they?
Yeah.
That box gets full.
Does it?
Boy Scouts take good care of it.
Yes, they do.
Good.
Pick it up on a regular basis.
Good. Is there a place you could move it to? It's kind of right where, you know, if it went over where the library book?
I think with, in consultation with Mr. Ferrara, who built the box in his project, I believe. You know, we have his contact.
Yeah, I have it if we need it, yeah.
Yeah, or...
So, you know...
Our elder scout master over here could probably come up with that, too.
Right near the library slot, something like that.
Figure it out.
Figure that out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
We'll put it right in the middle of the driveway.
Present problems. So I've sketched out basically the costs. There's already a project going on with M.O.N. Landscaping at Bliss Corner. We're gonna be using him, his costs are sort of ballpark. Tree planting is expensive these days. DPW will absorb the cost of taking the two dead trees down and grinding the stumps. And then M.O.N. Fernando, I think his name is, is ready to go. We'd like to do this, if I get approval from you, in May or June. It's a great time to plant. The trees going in, we've really studied this. They're tupulos, black gum tree, very hardy. Needs to be a hardy for a sort of urban way. Medium-sized trees, deciduous. They're really beautiful orange in fall. They're beautiful trees, so... Any...
How, how tall would they be?
Well, probably 40 or 50 feet, but that's medium-sized. You know, oaks can get, get up to 70 or 80. So it's really medium-sized.
With the, with the caliper that they're doing, that's, that's a big tree to put in.
Yeah, but they, my colleagues who know more about this than I do on the board feel bigger caliper is important.
We're looking at two to two and a half caliper. So these will grow to that height. They won't be installed at that height.
Going to be installed at two to two and a half caliper.
I mean, it's not, it's not little tiny trees that are gonna go in. These are some big-sized trees that are gonna be put in.
If you look down the street, eight were put in, and those calipers are pretty big, too. They're not, you know, they're like this.
Yeah, they're about five, six. They're over six foot tall.
I do have a question on the trees being removed.
Excuse me?
I have a question on the trees being removed.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Look, looking at the picture, one of them looks like it's a pine tree to the right of the entrance coming in the building, which in the last few years...
No, that's, no, that's not a pine tree. No.
This is out towards, this is out towards the street.
It says Truadia. It's to the right of the right entrance, and it's dead as Dornell. It's very dead, and...
This is not, this is not in front of the building, Ms. Brooks. This is out towards the street.
This is a butts...
Okay, I assume entrance, entrance to the building.
There, there's two. One is right next to the building, to the right of the right entrance. And it's tall and skinny, and it's really dead. The other one is out towards the flag box.
And that's the one that's marked presently?
They're both marked.
Yeah, right. Well, I didn't see the, the other one, but that one I did see.
That is, yep. And we're leaving the bigger one next to the street, which is not in great shape either. But we decided we're gonna try and prune it. And all the trees out there really have problems. They really do. There's a pear that's blossoming right now, but anyway, we're gonna, I hate to say it, we might be back in a year because we feel you need more vegetation out there.
Question? Maybe a moot point here, but is it an issue with the bidding process with this M.O.N. Landscaping, or is it under a certain amount?
Oh, it's under. I checked.
It's under the $10,000, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other question is, I face this in our, our old, our old shopping center. At some point, the tree's gonna be pretty tall. Are we concerned about it covering town hall, so you can't? Is that an issue? We won't be around for that, but...
Town Hall is pretty wide, and I don't think that's gonna be an issue. You can chop it down if you want.
We're not gonna be around for that, so...
You might be here, but we won't be here.
Yeah, right.
We, years ago, we, we were forced to put trees in that grow tall and it covered the buildings, so you couldn't see them. So this may not be an issue here, but...
Well, you'll have them spread out, and it's quite wide there, so, you know? And I asked, you know, that we split the cost with you. We raised money. We raised 10 grand. We're really pleased with ourselves. We spent 8 grand on the trees in front of, and try and notice them on, in, in front of middle school, going down all those new trees planted by Borneos. That was 8 grand. We have two left. We like to keep 1 grand and have you split this project with us. So we pay about 1,000, and you would pay 1,000.
I think we can.
Can we afford 1,000 bucks?
DPW Highway, yeah, they plant trees.
Yep. Okay. All right, what I need is to have a motion to approve this and to have the Tree Planting Committee to work with Tim Barber and with Tim Lancaster in getting the logistics.
And Mr. Mickelson on the relocation of the flag box?
Yeah, I'll take care of that. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, on the motion, Ms. Brooks.
Again, I'm looking at the, the map. The tree that we have been decorating as the Christmas tree in front of town hall, is that?
No.
A tree slated to be removed?
No, that's a pine tree.
No, it's not a pine tree. It's a, it looks like a dead maple. We couldn't tell what it was because the leaves weren't out when we looked at it.
There's some confusion. There's a tree up against the town hall that they, they put the Christmas lights on. That tree is not being removed.
No, that tree's being, not being touched. No, the big one's not being touched.
That's the one where we put all the decorations.
I haven't noticed, just, this is again...
You go out the door there, on the left. It's right against the building.
No, it's, if it's evergreen, that's, if it's in good shape, we're not touching it.
It's imperfect. It looks great to me.
The two we're taking down are dead. Dead, dead. Sorry.
We'll have to get rid of them. How, we can't represent the town that way.
Okay, so on the motion. All right, roll call vote. Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. You're all set.
Yay, thank you so much.
Thank you for waiting so long. I'm sorry.
I have one quick question about Adam. Doesn't he have to fill out some forms, who you just appointed?
He'll be contacted by our office to get sworn in.
You have all his information?
He's gotta be sworn in right away.
Thank you, guys and girl.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the annual Select Board Code of Ethics vote. As previously, in the previous couple of years, and because Mr. O'Neill is our newest member, there is a, there's a code of ethics that we, as a board, have approved and also adhere to as public officials.
And sign each year.
And we sign each year, so we need a motion to affirm the code of ethics for the, for the coming year.
Motion to affirm the code of ethics.
Motion was made by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? And by the way, this code of ethics is available on the town website. All right, on the motion, roll call vote. Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor.
Do we, we got a copy to sign? Oh, is that what that is down there?
It's on its way.
And I will come into the town hall and sign it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. This one's a good one, because somebody's gonna have to explain this one to me, even though I tried to read it. The Village Metered Parking Proposal Discussion, Mr.?
I'll give some background, I'll let Mr. Mickelson kind of elaborate. So the Village Parking Committee has been doing a lot of research in the village on parking. Part of that is, we were looking at some metered parking, not individual parking meters, but metered boxes. So Chad Deschamps, our system analyst in my office, has contacted three companies and pulled together some pricing, which is here, included. And that's why there's a little more detail in that, and Chad's happy to come into a future meeting, if need be, to explain more of the detail and the implementation. But with that, I'll let Mr. Mickelson kind of talk about the background.
We've had, I've had a group, myself, Mr. Tattelbaum joined the last meeting with, obviously, the stakeholders, the people that run all these businesses in the village. If you go to many seaside locations similar to...
Want a little music in the background?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
To Pedenham. The, there's no free off-street parking. It's, it's metered. And it's not, each one is metered. You go to a box and you, you have an A, B, C, whatever it is. Or like downtown New Bedford has something similar also. And you put a code, so it's all done on, on your phone. And it works really well. But this is a revenue enhancer for the town on top of it all. But more importantly, this is to stop people from parking in the village, which that parking is so, so sparse. This is to stop people leaving their car there all day long. That will not happen. So the, the, the bill, the, probably, sorry, the stores that desperately need customers all the time, that there'll be opportunities for open parking because it won't be, the same cars won't park there all day long. We've gone over this, town administrator, myself, and, and the meeting, the, the group that meets with us. We've done this for almost three years now, four years. And there are various parts of the, of that area that we might be able to utilize. Maybe the church at some point will, St. Peter's, isn't that correct?
Yes.
In the back, there was talk at some point that they would blacktop that area, and that would be available for, for parking. And of course, that would be another area that they'd have to pay for parking. It's not something with, that we've, we've taken out of our hats. This is, this goes on everywhere, and there seems to me no reason why we should not do it for the, for the town. And, and again, it's a revenue enhancer. Correct, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, it can generate some revenue and keep vehicles moving.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Mickelson said, some of the issues, employees parking there for the day and taking...
It's just not fair to, to anyone, especially the shop owners that, that abide by it, and the ones that don't, just take away from their customers. And they need customers, obviously. Thank you.
Okay, so this is just...
I'd like some further information. I'd like to know who is actually on the committee?
I'll send it to you.
And my concern is, yes, I do feel that there are a number of businesses in the village whose employees are parking along the street in the street parking and taking that away from folks that want to shop there, which to me is something that the merchants should be talking to their employees.
The last meeting we had, they, we told them that you're responsible for this. So you need to get together with your other business owners and make them aware of this and not take advantage of it.
Because I look at metered parking as a decision whether or not to go to the village. Once it becomes metered. Once it becomes metered.
Well, at this point, it's going to be Elm Street from Bridge, and then from Bridge to, to the Pedenham Bridge itself. There'll be not a lot of meters at this point, unless we get St. Peter's involved and other areas that we might be able to put, take advantage of off-street parking. But I'll get you that list.
I'm just curious, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mickelson, if you can get me a copy of that also.
I'll send it to everybody, yeah.
I don't know, Sean, if this, if this is part of a larger discussion about the shuttle service that people have brought up over the years, and trying to get to the core of the, of the issue, and the timing of the capacity down there. Some of the ideas that had come out were the use of a shuttle, some type of shuttle system between either St. Mary's, St. Peter's. And then even up the road, when we're talking about upon against it, Park, up the road at the boat shop.
On Truadia.
We also talked about using the old police station as a, as a drop-off point.
Right.
Shuttle service coming, going and coming to that, the end of Elm Street.
Yeah.
It's a perfect location, it's not very far, but you know, some of the seniors might not be able, or families with kids with strolls and stuff, they'd need that type of shuttle service.
Yeah.
But there are various-
However, if I want to run into Farming Post and buy something, I don't feel like, you know, doing a metered, I think it's very interesting, because I do feel that there's merchants down there that have parking available to their either staff or their clientele that is underutilized.
Well, you can, if you're familiar with these type of meters, you don't, you pay very, you pay very little for a few minutes. So that's, that's an opportunity.
I have probably every parking app on my phone, because I go to lots of locations.
I do, too, and it works quite well.
Pass for, yeah, I've got them all.
I think this warrants further, further discussion and completely, but I'm hesitant to throw this out, but I think I'm going to, because I think it just needs to be discussed. From all the years that I've been listening about parking in the village, one thing has never come up. And that's the town taking an eminent domain issue over the parking lot at the corner of a bridge in Elm Street.
Well, that's been brought up.
That's a private lot.
That's been brought up.
It's, well, I, and maybe in some, but it's never been brought up anywhere else. Because I mean, that's, there's a parking lot that's already there, it's private, I understand, I mean, you know. And there's an opportunity there for, I know it's going to cost a lot of money for, because it's prime real estate, but still, you know, there's an opportunity there for the town.
And it's never filled.
Right, and it's never filled.
It's never filled.
And if it was a municipal parking lot, believe me, it would be filled.
But that's where you put a meter.
I would also, I'd also like to add that I think that before we go much further, we need to have a, a presentation by the, by the Pedenham Business Association. How they feel about it, they voted on it, and they're majority in support of it, or maybe something else they want to do.
Because that, they would, their, their weigh-in on this would, you know.
I'm sure they'll be glad to come.
Yeah. All right, so, like I said, further discussion, further, you know, I know this wasn't, this isn't going to happen right away, that's for sure.
No, at least it's, we're talking about it now, rather than a committee with no answer.
All right, but if you can get that information to us, it'd be great.
We will get it to you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the United Steelworkers MOA for FY '25.
Yes, this is a F, MOA for FY '25 for a COLA increase for the steelworkers.
Okay, going from 1 and 1/2 to 3%?
3%, yes.
Okay, well, striking, 1 and 1/2, making it 3%. Okay, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. O'Neill. On the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, 5-0, okay. Next item is the Laborers Union MOA for FY '25.
Yes, this is part of a contractual wage opener agreement. This is a MOA for a 3% COLA for FY '25, and also adjusts two positions in DPW, the contract bidding aide and admin clerk, adjusting their grades from 3.2 and 3.4.
Okay, all right, any questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
A second.
Mr. Tattelbaum, on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, 5-0, passes. Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda, town administrator, town administrator search discussion. As many of you know, the town administrator will be leaving effective July 15th. So we have to discuss as to what we want to do as far as where we want to go. In your packet is two proposals, one by Paradigm, the other one by the Collins Center for a search. This is for your review, there's going to be nothing done about this tonight, because we need to discuss several things. Number one, how are we going to handle an interim position? If we're going to have an interim position, whether we're going to look in-house, are we going to? Basically, we need to discuss this whole thing. And part of the discussion also is the job description. Job description that currently is on the books is for the executive administrator. It's not for a town administrator. So we need to change that and upgrade it. And board members were given a draft for them to review and to discuss, which we will at a later meeting. So members, get ready for, to deal with, we wish Mr. McGinnis all the best in his new position. Hopefully, he doesn't become a Ravens fan. I'll be totally disappointed if he does. You won't become a Ravens fan, will you?
I don't know.
He is.
You'll see.
Well, maybe you have to.
Apolitical.
So this will be, yeah. So, so we will be, we need to discuss how we're going to approach this, so.
Have a question?
Yes.
Because this involves salary, et cetera, what portion of this is, needs to be under executive committee session versus open session?
That, that's part of the discussion I will have with town councils, so that we make sure that we do everything correctly. And the board will be notified.
Is the goal, is the goal to try to start that process for the next meeting if we can? Or what, is there a target on that?
We, I don't know if I'll be able to get it for the next process, the next meeting, because it's next week, but I will certainly try.
Well, that being said, that 13th that we were going to have a meeting, we probably could have just that one issue for an executive session.
If it warrants an executive session.
I mean, yeah.
And that's the thing, if the process, if the process going forward is not, it's not executive session.
Correct.
Discussions of personnel, discussions of compensation, that, yes. But the process going forward is not. That's just, so we can go from there. But that is, yes.
John, I do want to piggyback on what Stanley said, I do think we need to look at that May 13th as a meeting date, because in looking at one of the proposals, the timeline that it looked at, how we'd have to do this, the earliest we hire someone is late August. And by then, we're already going for, you know, putting together our next town meeting, so we don't want to drag our feet.
Well, that's if, that's if we decide to go with a search, but if we decide to, to go with an interim and, and use that interim as, as being a, somebody who can, who runs the town while we decide as to how we're going to go forward, yes, at that point in time. Personally, I feel comfortable with an interim. And then, because looking at the job market that's out there, I can tell you this right now, it's not really a good market for town administrators out there. There's a lot of people jumping from town to town, but there's not a lot of new considerations.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that we, you know.
All I'm trying to do is leave something open.
We maintain what we have, and continue to improve on what we have, just like everything else. Build upon what we have, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to say at this point in time that I regret, feel quite sorry that Mr. McGinnis is leaving. Can't control the circumstances, it is what it is. But, and I know there'll be a time when he'll be exiting, and we'll have something else to say, but at this point in time, I, I think that the work he's done for us in these six years has been, in my mind, remarkable. He's not a perfect man, neither, nor are any of us, but I congratulate him on the job he's done for us, and the fact that he's found something else quickly in whatever process he did is an indication of the kind of quality work he did here. Thank you.
It is, it is clear that Mr. McGinnis has left his mark in this town. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And all we have to do is look at our website, and some of the things that they've done electronically, technologically, clearly, it's got Mr. McGinnis's fingerprints all over it. And we thank him for that, for bringing us, for bringing this little town into the 21st century, actually 22nd century, so. So, and it's something that any, any successor is going to have to build upon, so, that's for sure.
We need big shoes.
Yep. So with that, we have the town administrator update.
All right, well, thanks. Short, so the public libraries received their state aid grant award of almost $90,000 recently. They, you know, this is great for the library, I think Dean and their staff do an excellent job, but we received this grant also because the town funds fully their requirements for town libraries. So the town's been very supportive budget-wise with the libraries, and it, it shows. The Recreation Center Building Committee did, conducted interviews with OPM search firms, very well-qualified firms, they're on the verge of making a decision, they should be doing that this week. The Eversource double pole update, we received an update from Eversource. They, surprisingly, they have a national joint utilities notification system database that tracks double pole locations, so.
It doesn't do a very good job.
As many as that we think we have here in Dartmouth, it pales in comparison to some other communities, not to say that it's okay. I think they've identified 44 poles in Dartmouth, but in Eversource's explanation, they're mostly, they're waiting for other utility companies to remove the utility. So they are on it, they promised to keep us in contact with their database and the other utilities, so we'll wait to hear back from them. And then lastly, you may have noticed, the town hall parking lines have been repainted thanks to Tim Lancaster and the facility staff, a mayor in Bronson, who came in over the weekend to get that done. That was a great effort on their part, and it really shows, it's helpful already today, because the parking lot was full and nobody was parking in places they shouldn't.
Sideways.
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, all business.
Oh, Bliss Corner, no new updates, same with Lake Nog朝 broadband, and Mast EP, no new updates.
All right, minutes of March 25th. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Second.
On the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill? Chair votes in favor? Oh, abstaining, I'm sorry, 4, 0, and 1 with one abstention. Okay, Select Board updates, anybody have any Select Board updates, Ms. Brooks? Tell Mr. Brooks to be quiet.
He's not there.
It's not Mr. Brooks.
He's not there.
Uh-oh.
Someone I really like.
Ms. Brooks, do you have anything?
No, but I did want, well, yes, I did want to say that the, in looking at the minutes, it reminded me that we had talked about having the building inspector come in and talking about how it's going, and having a meeting of interrelated departments, so we can talk about how the process is, especially with some of the feedback that we had gotten about permitting, to make sure that everyone is, it's, it's working smoothly, and answer any questions we have. So I wanted to just remind someone out there to put that together. And if it, if it needs to be a during-the-day meeting, so we can have those departments represented, then I would suggest that we schedule a Select Board meeting at a day and time more convenient than our typical Monday evening.
I would, I would, I spoke with them myself, and I think we need two different meetings. One is as quickly as we can, just to get an update, how he's doing, what he's doing, and any issues that come up quickly. And secondly, we promised to have input from, from the population to try to enhance the whole process, and that's a different kind of meeting.
Yep, and that's actually what I was thinking, let's get him in here first, find out how he's doing, and then we can go from there.
Agreed, sooner the better.
Well, then I would say it's three meetings.
Okay.
One, getting him in here.
As many as it takes.
A second one about the input from folks that use the building permit process, and then a third meeting for those interdepartmental.
Well, I think, I think the building, I think that process with the building permit can be, can be like a focus group, and not with us.
Right.
Can be, you know, with, with, with him and the people who use the permitting and whatnot. So we can get that, we can get that set up. All right, anything else, Ms. Brooks?
No, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Tattelbaum?
No.
Mr. Mickelson?
No, motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, for just the one thing. As you know, Mr. Gracie served on this board for nine years, and currently, Mr. Gracie's health has precluded him from running for another term. This board will be, hopefully, we will be able to honor Mr. Gracie at some point in time. Hopefully, he's well enough that he can attend the meeting, so that we can thank him for his nine years of service. If not, we will ask either Mrs. Gracie or Frank's family to come in his stead for that. So we'll be doing that within, within a short period of time. So with that, Mr. Mickelson?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you. On the motion, roll call vote, Ms. Brooks? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum? Mr. Mickelson? Chair votes in favor. Good night, everybody.